If it rains, you have to answer.
Oh, we should know.
Any of answers?
It's got some answers.
It is real quiet this afternoon.
I always understood that.
I think it's the other way around.
Wait, is that it? Maybe you should just gabble something. We have a better way.
We're getting breakaway.
Good job on the buses today.
That's kind of longer.
Good job on the buses today.
Yeah.
You stop right before you let all the buses out.
Please rise and vote for the button.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lance, please call roll. Nancy Sears Perry.
Here.
Rick Law.
Here.
Lon Fox.
Here.
Rich Lee.
Present.
Robert Ratchford.
Here.
Daniel Flanagan.
Here.
Mara Nguyen.
Here.
All right, let's move on to approval of claims. Any questions regarding claims papers?
I did, I've got a question here. So, let's go to page thirty-six. This one's for new Lance. One here. Okay, so Lance Hartman Williams, is this, this is coming to an end, correct? Other item here, six hundred and thirty, accounting services.
Uh, we have drastically reduced the amount of hours that Donna comes and works. Uh, part of our agreement that is ongoing is to come in and help with the annual financial reports. Uh, the last engagement in time that she was in the office, we were, we were going to double check all of the debt entries. And, and I also used her to go over one of the bank records associations. So, that six hundred, um, or dollar bill occurred probably November, maybe.
So, how long is she going to stay around?
I had her on, um, to come at the beginning of the calendar year through March. Not every day, but as a consultant, just to make sure that I have another set of eyes on the annual financial report.
Okay, great, great. Uh, let's go down to page thirty-eight real quick. The other one was the... Let's hit that, let's hit forty-one real quick. The one was the air handler, I believe it was on top of this building. I just didn't understand why that wouldn't be under warranty on a building this big. I believe that was... Was it Tom? I think I...
A whistleblower?
Oh, yeah. Why, why would that not give her warranty, air handler, blower?
I can check with the expiration date of the warranty, but we were in, it, it was very uncomfortable for the ladies in the utility office because it had stopped working. And they had brought in two separate floor units to heat the rooms because they couldn't feel their fingers. Because they're, uh, they, the heat wasn't working at all and they are, they had no insulation from the outside, so they were pretty miserable.
But wouldn't we normally get like a five-year warranty for something that new?
Oh.
And that, that bill was, it wasn't cheap. Somebody else have it there in front of them?
Eleven sixty-one.
Yeah.
Um, page forty-eight, maybe?
Forty-seven. Forty-seven.
Yeah, well, that's my question is...
It was originally like two thousand dollars. Cause it was split between water and sewer.
And we're in a building.
So, I think that's something we need to check with Pete on and, uh, check with Verdis, our, our owner's rep. See if those dollars can be recovered.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, thanks Lance, that's all I've got on that.
Any other questions regarding papers? Will I ever make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. All right, let's, uh, move on to minutes, December meeting minutes. Any questions or discussion?
There aren't, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve December minutes. Any other discussion? All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. There is no old business. I'm going to move on to election of officers for twenty twenty-two. Will I entertain a motion for new officers?
I'd like to make a motion for Lon Fox to president and Nancy Sears Perry to be vice president.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Let's take a roll call vote, Lance.
Nancy Sears Perry.
Aye.
Rick Law. Lon Fox.
Aye.
Rich Lee.
Yes.
Daniel Flanagan.
Yes.
Robert Ratchford.
Yes.
Mara Nguyen.
Yes.
All right, if it passes, I will gladly trade places with you, Mr. Fox.
How about I think it's Anthony to get?
It is your meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you. I first like to just publicly, um, express my appreciation to Rich Lee and the time that he has been president of his council. Um, he has set the bar really high. I appreciate your time, your effort, your energy. Uh, hopefully I can, even if it's in a fractional way, live up to those standards in the coming year.
Thank you, sir.
All right, before we get into the agenda of the new business, I believe, Ted, would you like to come up and say a few things as well as Chris?
Well, I think, yeah, he'll be a team.
You're going to tag team this?
Tag Ted, yes. Anything special I got to do to engage this guy? Speak. Speak. Excellent. Don't be hurt. Uh, just wanted to, uh, take a moment this evening to, um, publicly acknowledge the efforts of the fourth of the fourth committee, um, and the results for, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we were able to put on a successful event, uh, that we had to cancel in twenty twenty. Uh, the history of the event speaks for itself, uh, for those that are familiar with it. Uh, from our roots in two thousand and ten, uh, with three hundred and thirty participants. Uh, we peaked out in twenty nineteen at over twelve hundred participants. And after canceling in twenty twenty, uh, we returned over nine hundred and thirty participants, uh, this past July fourth. So, a tremendous effort, um, and not to be overlooked, it are the fifty-plus sponsors. Um, they're donating both their time and dollars to make a successful event. The, uh, the history of the event, uh, is a partnership with the Oak Town Chamber of Commerce. And we've run our financials through that organization, uh, from the beginning. And that, uh, is coming to an end, and Ted will talk a little bit about that transition. During our time partnering with the chamber, the effort was to draw attention to the downtown, try to get the downtown businesses engaged, and create an opportunity for them to be visible and for outsiders to come to our community and see that. And this year, now more than ever, we have an opportunity to highlight that. And we moved our start line, uh, right here to Civic Green, uh, this past year. And just, it served as a tremendous, uh, gathering space for, uh, the beginning of the race. And so, we're excited to, uh, to do that, and as the Oliver continues to grow and downtown expands with businesses, and we hope that the chamber will continue to be, uh, recognized and, and well-served, uh, by those efforts. The partnership again is to create awareness and expansion of trails in and around Yorktown, uh, connecting the schools, downtown parks, and community. Specifically, the communities of Evergreen, Woodland Trails, as well as all the other, uh, traditional, uh, communities here in, in Yorktown have all been connected now successfully. As we continue to expand, we hope to go further north and east, uh, particularly this newest sidewalk that went in on Nevo Road. Thank you for your efforts in seeing that through, and we're excited for how this ties in with the roundabout and the construction, uh, as it's already been implemented to continue, uh, making it safe for our families, children to, uh, to travel, uh, on these trails. Uh, six hundred going north, uh, downtown Tiger Drive River Road, um, the schools, the children. It's just a wonderful feeling to be, um, a parent and a community member and know that my children can get, uh, from our home to their neighbor's homes, to their friends' homes, to the schools, to the libraries, to downtown, and quite honestly, never have to be on a, on a, uh, major road, um, and at risk in that regard. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Ted Johnson now, another member of our committee, to explain what's happening next.
All right, thank you, Chris, uh, thanks for having us out here. Uh, first of all, you know, we've got to start off by saying that, you know, how much we've enjoyed putting this event on. Um, you know, we've seen most of your guys' faces there at the, at the race. Uh, between Chris and Pete and myself, it's, it's been, it's been, along with the host of others, it's been fun. Not only has it helped fund the trail system that we've all come to love, but, you know, it's kind of, you know, in the process of that, it's, it's added culture and community and tradition and, and all the things that you just really can't put a price tag in, in Yorktown. And it's, um, it's, it's cool to see that every year you're seeing this, you know, families come back and, and the traditions and the, seeing the pictures of, you know, their Christmas cards, as you see them, you see them posted on, uh, social media and such. And I've had a very unique vantage point, cause I'm the guy who's, you know, encouraging everybody, you know, good job. And so, I can, I can see everybody cross the finish line. And it's not very often that I don't see somebody who is, is not smiling. Whether they're, they're proud of themselves, or they're, they're crossing it with their wife, or they're watching their kids cross, or their dogs are coming through. It's, this is turning, I don't even like saying the word race, because it suggests that it is a competition, but it's really more of a community event. And you guys, uh, are, are very much part of that. Um, so it does have a, a very good energy that, that we're very proud of. But with all things, there, we know that there's also change that needs to come along with it. And with that being said, it is time for new blood to come in and kind of take over for the fourth of the fourth, so. Pete or Robert, Chris and Pete and I have, uh, uh, we're going to step back and let, um, another foundation come in and take over for, for the race. And, you know, and the good thing about it is that these people, they're going to be, um, very dynamic group of people. And they're going to, you know, we brought it to a certain level, they're going to take it to another level, and, and we're, we're very excited about that. So, proud to say that the new leadership for the fourth of the fourth is going to be the Yorktown Community Foundation. And so, the likes of Scott Smallstig, Chris Cook, uh, Ryan Girdon, um, Jonathan Lamb. So, very dynamic people that are going to take this to another level, and we're excited to see what happens with it. So, I'll finish up by saying thank you to you guys, and, but you guys have been very much a part of this trail system. And, you know, we've been fortunate to be able to help fund it, but without your guys' support, it wouldn't, uh, it certainly wouldn't happen. So, we're ha- we're happy to, uh, be able to do another check presentation to you guys. And we're in hopes that, uh, you know, this check will help fund the trail along River Road that, you know, right now it connects to, it, right now we're at Evergreen West on River Road. And there's a big dead spot until Grace Baptist or the, you know, River Road in Nevo. We, we'd love to see that connected and connect into, to the trail so that, for folks, you know, for we can go into Monty and, um, and without hopping on the road and dodging traffic and, you know, we are both suicidal, like, because it's, uh, it's not funded on, or funded on anything else. So, so with that said, um, this year we are going to be able to donate, uh, thirty-six thousand and six hundred dollars, uh, to the, to the trail system. Uh, so what that does over the past eleven years, the fourth of the fourth has donated, uh, close to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, to the system. So, we're, we're very proud of that, um, we thank you guys for your support in this. And if you have any questions, Chris and I are happy to, uh, answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ted, thank you, Chris. Uh, not to use a pun, but it's been a good run, eh? It's been a very good run, yeah. Yeah, great job, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, you set the bar really high.
Thanks.
And thank you, you've inspired a family of brothers at the Perry house.
Hey!
And I, I know we appreciate the encouragement that the two of you specifically have given to my sons, and that's been very important to our family, so thank you.
We wanted to get them, uh, in, on the top of the list because they've got a school board meeting to get to, so. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All right, next on the list is department heads. Counsel, you had a chance to take a look at the, um, recommendations from our town manager, even though he's presently not here tonight. Um, any comments, concerns, or questions?
Moved to approve.
I'll second.
I'd like, since we are lecturing, to let the public know the reason he's not here is he's quarantined, so he just did not show up. He's in order, so.
Thanks for the clarification. Mara is actually sitting in for it, maybe. If there is a question that, uh, has some legal interpretation, so you can answer that, but, uh... All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the department heads suggested. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
All right, we have our department head set for twenty twenty-two.
Next, we have the pork employment agreement explanation, uh, this is with our new town marshal. Um, Mara, you were involved in, uh, writing this particular document. Can you make any comments on that, please?
Just generally that it is a three-year contract guarantee of employment. Encourage keep them in the town marshal position, but under any law, you can't bind a future council to that decision, so you will continue to reappoint on a annual basis.
Okay, with that said, counsel, do you have any comments, questions, any motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Same side.
All right, we have the appointment agreement with the new town marshal. Next are the board appointments. These are the appointments that we typically would set on the first of the year, uh, starting in January meeting. Any discussion with counsel on, uh, any of those appointments?
Mr. President, I've spoken with, uh, most of the appointments here or traded emails with them. Um, the redevelopment commission, each member responded they would love to stay on and done a fantastic job. They, they would prefer to stay on. Um, as far as the redevelopment authority, the same, um, there are three members on the redevelopment authority. They would like to remain on the architectural review board at the same. And regarding the board, the BZA, Mr. Hurley has asked to step away from that. And I have not been able to connect with the city speakers. Planning Commission is also one of those that is a, there are three members on there. Mr. Jarman has asked to remain on that, the other two members are council members.
I would be interested in staying on Planning Commission as well.
And I also, unless there's some ask that we want to step up, uh, I would join in.
And at your leisure, you have the appointment for ECI regional planning, or actually, that's a council appointment, as well as the MPU policy committee. And two council members for the community foundation, Mara and Nancy Lashkew.
Would the council members for the community foundation like to stay on, or is someone else interested?
Unless somebody else is interested, I would say no response.
I would gladly support you with the ECI regional planning. Unless that's when you pick a...
Okay, Rich, ECI regional planning, and then, uh, Dan, you will continue with the transportation policy question.
Yes.
So, really the only thing outstanding then is appointments by the president on the BZA, as well as the redevelopment board. We have a motion on accepting these board appointments.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All approvals, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will be in touch with some of these folks, uh, regarding some of the appointments by the president of the officials. Okay, next, uh, on the agenda is capital assessments. Uh, this is an explanation where, uh, we will engage with Hartman Williams. Uh, Lance, would you like to, uh, give us a little description about what that engagement means?
So, the capital assets ledger has been completed by another company up until this year. And the timeliness of the ledger has been an issue because of the audit. I called and did my timing on the ledger. And I would like to have that ledger completed in much more timely manner. Um, so, I would engage Ellen Bittson from Hartman Williams. Uh, it is a maximum, um, quote that you're looking at. And she, uh, she, um, her goal in coming into the town was to work herself out a job. And this engagement is a similar arrangement, because it is for two years, and then we will no longer seek council assistance for the capital assets ledger in the third year.
What was the cost for the previous vendor on this?
Uh, we just paid his claim for the year two thousand, um, materials, and that was five thousand dollars. So, the reason it's a little time heavy is that she's going to check and make sure the work from the previous company is accurate, as well as building a new ledger for the next year.
Do we have to ask that the, that the work is not accurate?
No. It is past the audit, there's been no comments made about our capital assets ledger.
All right, counsel, any other questions concerned?
Is there a need then for that particular practice service, if there's not a question about the competency of the previous bidder?
The state board accounts has changed the requirements now and included depreciation, as opposed to just historical costs. And so, each year the computations will change, because we'll have to figure in the depreciation for assets every, for every asset, every year going forward. Uh, it's more along the lines of general accounting principles as opposed to just cash raises. So, it's, it's pretty involved now.
So, Lance?
Last time we were here, two meetings ago, we were talking about writing off these water bills. I know that some people were getting, that was one of my questions back then, but I think some of the checks were at as high as two hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, so if we, we, how did we refund these? I thought we were going to just write them off, that's what we talked about in one million, reading that on one of the pages back there. I mean, we, did we actually write people checks and try to get them back out to them, or are these checks, how's it handled? Cause I thought we were going to write it off.
Are they talking about delevered payments?
Yeah, that's delevered payments, that doesn't have anything to do with the assets.
No, that was one of my questions I was asking.
I, I don't know how the utilities are going to handle that. I know that, off the top of my head, we have, um, a collection agency that's involved in some aspects of that, but I'm, I don't have to be a big question as far as how he's going to take care of those underlying payments or bills.
I'm going to walk you through after the meeting, show you what I'm talking about, okay? Thanks.
All right, any other questions, comments by counsel on the capital assessment engagement letter? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Lance, you've got that. Next on the agenda, we have ordinance eight-two-zero, the bond ordinance. Um, any comments or questions from counsel on what this is? Okay, any motion?
Moved to introduce ordinance eight-twenty and eight-twone.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to introduce ordinance eight-twenty and ordinance eight-twone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm moved to waive the rules for the second reading.
Second.
Uh, uh, clarification on which ordinance?
On ordinance eight-twenty, sir.
We have a motion and a second to waive the rules on ordinance eight-twenty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Moved to approve ordinance 820.
I'll say it again. All right, you have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 820. Again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ordinance 820 then has been introduced and passed. Ordinance 821 has been introduced, and my understanding is that a public hearing will follow. Next on the list is moving the March council meeting to Monday, March 14th. And would our council have any conflicts with that? Comments or questions?
No, just for clarification, that was done because of the school spring break falls, and that would benefit Pete and Lance and a few other people. So, I think that's what the intent was. Moved to approve.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to move the meeting to Monday, March 14th, and a second. All in favor, say aye. All right, any opposed? All right, next, we've got our water, wastewater, stormwater item, which is the alarm system. That has been explained again in our emails from Pete. Any questions or comments from council on that?
Oh, I will just mention that the, they really could be the subgrade. The board alarm system really amped away with that.
And it's my understanding that the monies are available in the department budget for that? So, this would be within the scope of spending for this department. I'll make a motion, put no other comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the upgrade to the alarm system in place water plant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That expenditure is approved. All right, and next, we have departmental reports. Anyone here from the fire department? Dan Marshall.
Good evening, everyone. Nothing really to report, just wanted to say that after my first week, I'm still here, so I guess that's a good thing. I've had the chance to push some policy on to the town manager and have him review that. So, you should all be seeing some things come through here in the next few days or the next few weeks. I've had a chance to meet with my staff, all the two of them. I've had a chance to do one-on-ones with it and discovering what deficiencies are out there and things that we need to address in the upcoming days, weeks, and months. So, but other than that, happy to be here and thanks for all that, and I'll answer any questions if anyone has.
I just wanted to say thank you. I contacted an officer in regard to the situation and was just very pleased with the response. And I told you a little bit about that, and I'm just very appreciative for the care of your officers.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mara. All right, town manager obviously on the list, but he's not present. Clark Trey, do you have any comments?
I have two items, please. The first item is that I need you to accept the surety public official bond on behalf of the town marshal and the clerk of record.
I'll make a motion. I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passed. Thank you for your trust in me. Indiana Code allows us to void all outstanding checks and unpaid checks after two years as of December 31st. I have checks that total the amount of $993.72. So, with your permission, I will refund those back into the fund they were drawn from. If you can accept the cancellation of warrants request, please, with a motion.
So.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else? That's it. All right, this time, we'll take comments from the floor. We'll start with the first row. Please move to podium, state your name and address, and keep your comments to two or three minutes. Anyone from the first floor? Anyone from the second row, excuse me? Anyone from the third row that'd like to come up and address the council? All right, no comments from the floor, we'll go ahead and take comments from our council members. Let's go ahead and start with you, Nancy.
Just thank you for the nomination vote. I look forward to serving as vice president, and I really enjoyed my first year on the council. There's a learning curve, but we're very fortunate to live in such a wonderful community. And it's nice to be able to engage with all of you. Thank you, Ms. Gilliam, for supporting tonight and live streaming. I really appreciate that and that we can live together with our schools for that. Something I would like to focus on this year would be our parks. And so, I would like to have some input from people. I have lots of catalogs from various equipment companies. I would like to really see our parks become something that is more accessible to those with various disabilities. And there are just some really wonderful opportunities to do that. And I know Marta and I have recently joined an Indiana Park Association and look forward to hearing more about how we can build something even greater here. It's one of those things, just like the Board for the Fourth, parks are something that makes the community sticky and keeps people here once they're here. And I just look forward to working more with that.
All right, Mr. Fox?
No, it's time, thank you.
All right, Mr. Lee?
Oh, thank you. And congratulations on Nancy. Full confidence in you guys and support and whatever you guys need. Thanks for stepping up. And thanks to the rest of council for your support and help. You know, we can do this, and I love it, it's a team effort. So, appreciate all your help and everything. That's all I got.
I don't have anything, I'm empty. I'd like to thank the people for coming to the meeting, and thanks to the Board for the Fourth, and all the volunteers, sponsors, the Chamber, for all their efforts over the years, and looking forward to moving on with this and moving forward. And thanks to Rich Lee for being president, and congratulations to Lon and Nancy. Thank you, Mara.
And thank you indeed for coming tonight. I know I sent you a message kind of last minute, but hopefully, next month, we'll have our equipment here and we'll be able to livestream like as a town. So, we do appreciate you stepping up. Thank you all for coming tonight, we appreciate it. You're kind of one of our biggest attendants, I think, in my 13th meeting, so it's nice to see all the faces. And Ryan, excuse me, I don't know the name of your company.
Mosaic.
Mosaic? Yes.
Sorry, Mosaic.
Yes, thank you. Mosaic, is it Solutions?
Mosaic Solutions Group.
So, they are now contracted with our town. We are really excited to bring them on. They're gonna bring more awareness to the community and the events and using social media streams and things like that. So, we are really excited to have them here. I'm sorry, I didn't know the actual name. Even Kelsey just wasn't clicking. So, I am excited to work more with the parks as well. We need more, more drawn, you know, more things that draws there. Our park is huge and can have so much more opportunity, I think, than what we're utilizing at the moment. So, congratulations on Nancy, and thank you all for coming.
All right, I'll wrap things up, thank you, Marta. I couldn't agree more about the parks. We do have assets with our park systems. And they're the centerpiece of our community, and I think it's a lot for us to be proud in. I also appreciate the confidence in the vote as president. I appreciate Nancy for being willing to be vice president. I look forward to working together, Nancy, because I think we have a lot ahead of us that we can, you know, collectively put ourselves together and lead this group. Because I'm very proud of what this group has accomplished over the years. And this is starting my 10th year on council. This is kind of the night of first, and I haven't been to a council meeting during my 10th year without our town manager present. And he may be watching this at some point, don't get used to it, Pete. It's also a first for me being council president. I, again, hope that I can live up to the standard that Rich has set. I will do my best. And then, again, to have some digital recording at this meeting, I think that's also a first while I've been on council. And I appreciate the effort to spare, Marta coordinating that, and this clearly being here. So, that's all I have for the evening. I wish everyone to stay healthy, and I hope to see you next month, being adjourned.